Okay, time having arrived. Thank you for attending tonight's public hearing on the budget. Public hearing is an opportunity for citizens concerned, residents, employees, to speak with respect to obviously the process and have an opportunity to voice their concerns. So, statutorily, I need to read the following. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38-N, the hearing is now open for members of the public to discuss the proposed FY 2015 school committee's recommended Brockton Public Schools budget. The role of the school committee is to listen to comments and concerns. Members of the school committee will not respond to any of the statements or questions during the course of the hearing. In consideration of all speakers, I ask that each individual attempt to complete their remarks within three minutes. And after everyone has an opportunity that has signed in, and if someone else just walked in and they want to speak, we will add them to the list. And after those remarks, then the public hearing would close, and then we would move into our special meeting tonight to basically have some final discussions and amendments to our budget. So, that having been said, we do have so far four people. Is there anyone else that wanted to be added to the list? Okay. So, we have four individuals. First, we have Mr. John Talbot. John? Good evening, John.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent. Good evening, Mr. Minicello.
John, can you just push the mic a little bit closer to you?
I can.
I think so. There you go.
Better?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Superintendent. Good evening, Mr. Minicello. And, excuse me, I was at school committee. I would like to speak to you on behalf of the custodians. This isn't the first time.
I can't say it.
This isn't the first time we've suffered deep cuts. Unlike other unions, we've been unable to return to our staff to a formal level. We've been understaffed since 2010. Now this round of cuts, I'm unsure what kind of magic tricks will be able to be expected. I have no idea how we'll be able to provide the level of services that are needed to keep the schools in proper condition. Even with all the cutbacks, custodians will be expected to fulfill needs of the school programs. It is not realistic. The custodial workforce is already stretched thin. Travelers are expected to fill in when people are out, also move and deliver things. The outside grounds crew cares for the athletic fields and the other schools. The craftsmen, they repair and sometimes remodel buildings. Many of these things go unnoticed, that is, until they're not being done. It will now, excuse me, it is well-known that people want what they want when they want it and have little concern with our staffing problems. I feel if we are cut at this level, it will greatly affect the standards we have gotten used to. Just because we oftentimes go unnoticed, in no way should we ignore it. Remember, it takes a village to raise a child. It will take all departments to run the school department, to run the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next on our list is Ms. Mary Jane Pozano. Mary Jane?
Good evening, Madam Superintendent and School Committee. I'm here before you as a lifelong resident of Brockton, in the position of the Administrative Assistance and Technical Employees. I too have had three children come through the school committee, I mean, come through the schools, and I have to say, my children have been through the bad times and the good times. And we are now back at the bad times, but I'm still not understanding why all these cuts are so necessary. You cut 14% across the board, but you are not bringing back the same percentile in every single union. I feel this is unjust. We are the Administrative Assistance, and at this time, you are not bringing any of the 14 positions you have cut back. I'm not quite sure how you understand that this is going to affect work. We have mandated FBI fingerprinting coming in. You cut that position. Who's going to do that? We are already working to a limit of capacity. We stay late, we come in early, we work through lunches, we don't take breaks, and then you've devastated our union. We have 95 members, you've got rid of 14. And then you're going to displace a few of us to fill the schools. Work is going to slow down. I don't know how it's not going to. It's devastating to us as a union. We lost a member who's eight months pregnant. I don't know how she's going to do it with health insurance. I just want to state that we, to coin a phrase from Superintendent Smith, we have a union that's not going to go away. We are going to fight till every member is back in their position. And I'm sure all the other unions feel the same way. Every member needs to be brought back. And I'm not sure why you're not looking at charging fees to these students. Every school district around you charges for senior parking, after-school activities, busing. You charge a couple bucks to each one, it adds up. $50 for seniors to park their cars. They can afford a car, they can afford a license, they can afford the insurance. $50 a year is not going to hurt them. I thank you for your time and consideration into this, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ms. Linda Cahill.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith and School Committee members. I feel the need to speak for my Health Service Department. I have a document here, if you could look at that. Ann Claver made this document for us. She's one of our nurses. She's great with the statistics. So, currently, we have 31 nurses and eight health aides, eight health pairs. Our ratios are, the state recommends that the ratios be one nurse per 500 students. We have 17,000 students, so we, at this time, are still understaffed. Three of my nurses got pink slips, and I can't see how we're going to do this. On the first page, it just shows you how many students we have with allergies. We have 3,300 students with allergies, and seven Epi pens have been given so far this year. So, those are seven lives that were saved this year. We have a lot of students with migraines, 203 students with migraines, and they received 582 doses for migraines that would keep them in school. On the next page, we have asthmatic students, students with asthma, 2,800 students with asthma. We have 677 PRN prescriptions for asthma, and this year so far, we've had 2,800 doses of albuterol inhaler given and 192 albuterol nebs given. So, these students were able to stay in school because they had medication in school. We had, as of today, well, yes, this was made today, I mean, yesterday, as of today, we've had 13 students go out by ambulance because of asthma. On the next page, we have 47 students with diabetes. Now, caring for a student with diabetes takes a long time. When they're newly diagnosed, it can take up to an hour a day for the nurse, plus she has to see all those other students, give their meds, any injuries, any illnesses, she has to deal with that also. In the course of this year, out of those 47 students with diabetes, the nurses have tested blood sugars 6,910 times. Carbohydrate counting takes a while to do. What the nurses do is they have the student come in, tell, the student will tell the nurse what they eat for lunch, the nurse will have to look under Chartwell's menus and see how many carbohydrates they eat, and then they have to administer insulin according to the doctor's orders. So, it does take a long time for the nurse. Some of the nurses have more than one diabetic at the high school, there's 15 diabetics, and there's three nurses at the high school. So, on the next page is just a summation. Up at the top, you'll see the number of student encounters. Our database tabulates for the year, so it's year-to-date, we have 134,000 visits plus. Our health office staff also are responsible for doing screenings, so they do heights and weights, they do eyes and ears and scoliosis screenings. These are mandated by the state. Our health aides also assist with these screenings, and we have hearing and vision techs also. So, out of this total, 134,000, only 8,000 were dismissed. 134,000 visit, out of those visits, 123,000 stayed in school, and we have a return-of-class rate of 91.8%. State average is 88%. So, as you can see, the nurses do a great job in keeping the kids well and staying in school. I'm concerned if we cut our health office staff, that the students aren't going to be seen on a timely basis, and a lot of these kids are going to end up going home. So, those are my concerns, and I'm just asking that you please consider not cutting the nurses or the health aides. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. And last on our list is Mr. Jim Bosco.
Good evening, and thank you to the school committee for allowing me this opportunity. I'm a resident of Brockton, and I'm here to thank the Brockton Public School System for graduating my two children, who went through the entire, their 12 and 13 years of education, and from everything myself and my family recognized was a great education. And I want to thank the school system for that. And I wish I was taking all three of my minutes to talk to you about those years and those great accomplishments. And I pictured myself one day doing that. And today, unfortunately, I'm here to speak the rest of my time, not for the positive things of this. You know, my children entered, I believe, at the right time. They came in when there was, you know, monies for No Children Left Behind, and we had smaller classrooms in testing and accountability. And I think that all contributed to the great education they got. I couldn't ask for a better turnout for my children. I read in the paper that there were, you know, Brockton teachers were 20, 22nd in the state of the highest paid. And I talked to some of my colleagues about that, and I said, "I'm very proud of that." And they're like, "Well, you know," and I looked at it as something to be proud of, that we have, they may not be the highest-paid teachers, but in my judgment, they, you know, if we're paying teachers for what they're worth, that's a good thing that Brockton can do that, because I think there's a return on that investment. And I spoke to some other family members and things, and when we talked, it was like, you know, our teachers, because I know the school system and I was involved, it wasn't that teachers came in from 8:00 to 2:00 and they worked as a part-time position. Many of our teachers come in early for earning learning, and they stay late for extra education for our children. Brockton is very challenged, I believe, we're diverse, and we have a population that requires the extra effort. And I think in doing that, when you look at a teacher's salary, regardless of where their pay scale is, they do very, you know, a very good job for what they're faced with. And I just want to thank them for everything they've done for me. My question would be, you know, I've been watching and paying in contention, and I don't have children in the school system anymore, but I care for it very, very much. And I wonder, with the bleak forecast that I've seen presented, I asked my state delegation, "Well, what would we ever expect for next year?" And I don't know, I haven't heard no answer to that. But being faced with what we're being faced with this year, I believe affects the whole community, all of us. What happens to a school system when it becomes, when the schools start to become underperforming levels, and the state steps in and has to take over our schools? What does that do for businesses, just for us going to work? And people saying, they're seeing us on the news and seeing, seeing, Brockton has had, our school system has been a beacon over the last decade of being able to look towards and say, "What a shining star." We don't have, we don't have a lot of other things we can point to, and if we're going to lose our shining star, Brockton's in trouble. I mean, I've heard it said that, you know, 300 students were added last year. We may have whatever the numbers are, we're going to, we're challenged with additional numbers this year. So, what is Brockton faced to do? My suggestion is to residents and people involved, that it's just not Brockton. If this was Taunton, New Bedford, what other municipality it may be that face a challenge like that, I believe that that's the opportunity for our state delegation to put into an effect, special conditions as an amendment to a budget, to a state budget line item, that says any community, not just ours, but if it was New Bedford, I'd feel the same way, that they come up with a special event funding for communities like Brockton. I talked to people, you know, if there's 300 students, I was in orientation with my daughter for college, and her, you know, most of the parents I was talking to, they didn't even graduate 300 students. And I said, "We were close to 900." And they're like, "Wow." And, you know, they were, had graduating classes of 100, 150. And I'm sitting there, "We're taking in 300 a year of new students," and the challenge of doing that in our environment. So, I would look to our state delegation to maybe, if there's something we can do, work to you, our city council, and our state delegation to lobby, to maybe put some amendment forward. In closing, I mean, downsizing, I understand business and I understand downsizing when it's needed, if it's necessary, and maybe there are some cuts that might be necessary in the school department. I don't know that, that's something that you guys all do, but what I would call this, what is being presented to the residents of Brockton, is a complete gut job of our Brockton school system, and is unacceptable for any Brockton resident. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone who certainly spoke, and to be honest with you, I don't think anyone sitting up here really disagrees with anything that was just said. I think we all feel the same way. There's a lot of components to make a successful school system. It's, you know, it's all the different bargaining units, it's all people working together, doing the different roles that are necessary to function, and, believe me, we all get that up here. So, we are, you know, we unfortunately tonight have a certain number to work with, and we have to go forward in terms of making the decisions that need to be made in order to go forward for next year. But I can assure you that money still are sort of coming in in dribs and drabs, and, you know, I'm not supposed to, but, you know, to the last point, we are certainly reaching out, those efforts are being made. We've had discussions, and we are continuing to have discussions. And as the superintendent and the school committee stated before, there is a funding formula that no longer works for an urban district like Brockton. The reality is that we, we receive more students in the Commonwealth than any other district, and for us to basically have that lag time, lag time before we're funded for those kids, it's really absurd, and it's just a budget buster. So, those discussions are taking place. The problem is, I don't have a check yet that I can just say, "Tonight, I have a magic $2.5 million," and guess what? It can recall everyone that has received a pink slip. Do we all want to do that up here? Absolutely. We'd love to do that. But just understand that we haven't given, we have not given up. Brockton never gives up as a community. We're continuing to have the conversations, and we will take whatever actions. I can tell you that we're committed to going forward if we do not receive what we feel is the proper outcome. You know, we will request that the courts look at this. And, you know, so we are prepared to go forward in the future. The problem is, you know, we have, we have basically a deadline for the end of this month, and we have to make some serious and horrible, hard decisions. And again, everything that people said tonight, you know, we all agree with you. Madam Superintendent, before we close, would you like, to close on the public hearing part, would you like to say something?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Minicello. I think all of you know what we have been going through for, it seems like forever. I think it's only been the past month and a half. I have publicly said a number of times, and I truly mean this, I can't thank the school committee enough for everything they have done. And those of you that have followed it, they have been activists, they have been out there speaking on your behalf. We have been doing very hard work of identifying some programmatic cuts, all of it cuts deep, and we're trying desperately to get this done so we can start to bring people back and start to move the district forward. And Mr. Bosco, it's interesting, I think you should be a community activist, because that really is what it's all about. You know, it's not just yourself, I'm sure there are many parents out there, many community members that feel exactly the way you do. I also feel those same sentiments, and I live here, my children went through the Brockton Public Schools. And interesting enough, you mentioned downsizing. While this might look like that, we are not downsizing, and we're not prepared for the growth that we are experiencing. I do want to say to the union presidents, you know, John spoke tonight, Mary Jane, I've certainly worked with Linda, Kim, Dan, you have been excellent. You've been respectful of a very difficult process, and you continue to lead your union members. And I thank you, and I know you're not going away. So, what I do want to say to the public is that there are next steps that Mr. Minicello just shared with you. We're on that. This will continue. I said to the school committee that every week, we will continue to let them know of funds we have identified. We'll continue to have it up on the website, so it is not something that once we leave here this evening that goes away. We're back at the drawing board tomorrow, finishing up on possible early retirement incentives. We're back again on Monday. So, we will be, we'll be back, unfortunately, at this budget process for many days to come throughout the summer. I do want you to kind of hang in there with us, and certainly hold us accountable to make sure that you're all in the loop, and I thank you for doing that.
Any of the other members want to say something before we close the public hearing?
You did a great job, Tom. Thank you. And Superintendent Smith?
Okay. I need a motion to close the hearing. Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. Public hearing is closed. So, I'll just give this to Wanda. Okay. So, now, we transition and call to order our special meeting of the school committee to discuss some, what are called, final discussions of the 2015 school department budget. But as we previously stated, the process is ongoing, because we're continual, we are continuing to seek more funding despite what we have this evening to work with. So, normally, at the end of, at the end of June, when the kids are out of school, the school committee has two school committee meetings, official school committee meetings over the summer, and things usually go smoothly. I don't anticipate that for the summer. I anticipate us having to sift through and continue to advocate and continue to make decisions ongoing this summer. So, despite the fact that tonight, some people will not be recalled, I do not put it out of the future that over the summer, there will be amendments to what is being done this evening. So, I anticipate basically a working summer, so. So, Madam Superintendent, do you want to bring us up to speed in terms of your amendments to the last finance subcommittee meeting and the recommendations for this evening?
Okay. And Mr. Minicello, all of you have, you know, two documents in front of you. When we left the last meeting, we started to talk about, when you work with numbers and you work with accountants, and Mr. Petronio is the best, one of the things that happens is you start to work in percentages. So, what I want you to see this evening, although when we're looking at some of the cuts, especially in personnel, the paper over to the side shows you, for instance, if I can just review the power one, and then I'll go back to the actual budget sheet. When we did 14% across the board, it required 52 reduction in force notices for that particular unit. Out of that 52, you see in front of you that 28 were powers that actually received a pink slip, and 17 that are subpowers that have to still take the power protest, there were other things that they need to take. But though, that is the number 45. Those were actual pink slips that were given out to employees. Down below that, you see the number 7. And although those are positions, and I don't want to lose sight of the fact we're not downsizing, but for right now, those are unfilled positions. Either we immediately held back once we knew what was happening, some of them actually even had job ads that had gone out, and we had a hiring freeze. So, as we look at, you know, the sheet here, I'll go through it when I talk about what we're recommending to you, but I want you to understand that real numbers for people that actually got pink slips and other positions that we held off, and I'll go through that as we talk. As far as our certified staff members, from our 199 certified staff members, at this time here, I am recommending to you that all of our staff members will be returning, and I want to explain why. First of all, and I will share that with you in your Friday packets, so that you know that it was timely. When I left to come to the school committee meeting the other night, I had received word about a possible increase in Title I funds, so we were thrilled. But before I could share that with you, we had to look into it deeper. We actually had Karen McCarthy, our coordinator of Title I, we had John Jerome come in, who had, for many years, had overseen Title I. So, we were able to identify about a 4% increase that, we haven't got official notice, about 4% increase. So, with that, if you look at the eight that we had remaining on our certified staff members, we are bringing three of those eight back to teachers that I can tell you have signed for the early retirement incentive. Two of them were moved to grants, one was an Adult Learning Center position that directly went to their grant, and the other was the sped administrative position that is being picked up by a grant. And the other three are because of the Title I funds that we have identified. I will still, I want to bring to your attention that I still have, from the five administrators, three will not be returning to their positions. They do bump back into the unit, so I don't have anybody at this point that has a so-called pink slip, and you're able to save on unemployment. So, two of the administrators were called back into their positions. One is the bilingual department head, and the other would be the special education one.
Just a quick question, if I may. The phys ed positions that we needed to maintain in order to be eligible for the Carol White Grant, are they included in this?
Yes.
So, we will be able to get that grant?
Yes.
Okay, that's good news.
And now, we can, Karen Watts should be back by our July 8 meeting, and we could start to move forward. And then those, I guess that's good news.
That is good news.
You know, then you start to look at.
It's hard to walk away from a grant like that.
Correct. It'd be great for kids, as you all mentioned, with the reduction in so many activities, the CrossFit, the additional, as Dr. Murray stated to you, there's large class sizes in the gym, this will help to reduce those class sizes.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So, any questions on that? If you go down to our paraprofessionals, because I had started with paraprofessionals, and also, when we left the other night, the mayor, of course, talked to you about something that has to go before the city council. We've just highlighted on this budget sheet as far as programs. You'll see on the second page, your freshman sports and your middle school intramurals and equipment. Right now, that has to go through the city council. It still is obviously a cut in our budget, so we can bring staff members back, and that, we're being told, will be reinstated. I'll keep you updated as I hear. And I also will remind you that the other monies that came forward the other night, the mayor spoke of 105 by the time we actually looked at that particular employee, that was the cable money. It had to do with health benefits along with salary, and it's 101,000 that we're able to identify. And the mayor had also made a comment at the time, that he wanted you to look at non-certified staff, and you have told us that the priority at this point are MTA's and paraprofessional- staff, and you have told us that the priority at this point are MTAs and paraprofessionals because of classroom oversight with the students. So let me go to the paraprofessionals. So as I told you, there were 45 actual pink slips for people, and that was between the 28 powers and the subpowers. You also have seven, you'll see the number 7, that's out there for positions that remain unfilled. I am asking you at this time, because of money that we identified in the substitute budget, the additional 200,000, and there was some additional money left over from our cuts, asking you to recall 10 of those positions, which brings down your actual number of people, powers, to 35. We also have some unemployment savings, and I'll talk about that at the end because that'll be part of our next steps. The next item, when you're talking about the monitor teacher assistance, we had, we actually ended up sending out 19 pink slips. We originally had 18. There was one extra in our figures which brought us to the 19th because of, sometimes you end up with a tie in where somebody is for riffing reasons. So out of the 19, we identified again, five from the substitute budget, and I would like to, again, because of your priorities, recommend five because of the cable TV money that came in at 101,000, excuse me, $101,000. That leaves nine remaining employees, MTAs, that would need to be recalled. When you go down to our administrative assistants, as Mary Jane had stated, the percentage was 14 required riff notices. There were actual, 12 actual notices, but two were retirements. And I don't want to lose sight of the fact, you know, I don't want to talk about downsizing. I'm aware of that, but those are 12 people to be called back right now as far as unemployment, and you do have the two retirements in there. Under your custodians and craftsmen, we had 19, and this was, we found an error again in our figuring, I believe Human Resources rounded down, we rounded, excuse me, we rounded down, they rounded up, and it should have been 19 according to the 14%. There were 17 pink slips that actually went out. 15 were custodians, two were craftsmen, and we do have one disability retirement that came in that we're not filling at this point. So we have 17 members of that unit that need to be recalled. Now, when I talk about, you know, if there is any possible good news, and this is the, excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. Minicello brings to my attention again. We also have out at this time, 19 parent liaisons, recommended last time, and we also had four So I believe that, is it 96 the total?
Yeah.
So presently, that's 96 total cuts that we still have in the Brockton Public School budget. That is a large, large number. And what I, when I started to talk about the good news, is Mr. Petronio and his staff has had people in for early retirement. So if I can talk on that line for good news. There are people, we have some commitments. Tomorrow is the last date, and as we spoke about, that as a unit, for instance, if it's custodians, the jobs will go back to the custodial unit. If it's administrative assistants, it'll go back to the administrative assistance units. Other good news, we're looking at, because of bringing people back, we have numbers that I'll be able to, again, talk to you hopefully starting Monday, because we're back to the table immediately after tomorrow, once we get through the early retirement. We have unemployment cost savings. We're presently still looking at some efficiencies in some of our programming with, which included some race to the top money. We have a race to the top grant that we're finalizing and we're looking at some additional funds there. And if you look at the sheet that you have here, the spreadsheet, we have $48,000 that I can give you that actual cost for some of the savings that we already had. Now, again, I, tonight, we're not finished school till Wednesday, we have a half a day. Once the city council passes this budget on Monday evening, the recall letters will go out immediately on Tuesday, which is June 24th. We will be sending out a notice to all staff members tomorrow. We'll send an email out to talk to them about what's happening, and the principals will have in their hands, or department heads, directors, for recalls on Tuesday morning for those being recalled at this time. As I said, I feel positive going forward. Not only do I have hope just looking at some of the cash that we're looking at to be able to, even as early as next Monday or Tuesday, recommend to you to bring back according to some of your priorities. So again, we will continue to whittle this down. We have a number of grants out there, and as I said, when you look at grants, they will help move possibly positions out of Chapter 70 and free up some Chapter 70 money as we go along. So it isn't that necessarily a grant is written for a custodian, or a grant is written for an administrative assistants, although that has happened. But it will allow us to move money around. We end up with retirements. I mean, things do happen in a large system over the summer. So we will continue to make this a priority every day.
Mr. Robinson?
So this current, the retirements that are listed here are part of the retirement incentive program?
Three were in the teachers. People had actually signed. Those were actual...
Okay. So in the teacher line item, the ability to bring back those eight accounts for three who have already signed on the dotted line, accepted the incentive, but in the other places, their retirement's absent of the, of any of the retirement incentives, the people who were due to retire or...
Right. I have many conversations with phone calls that they're told they either sent paperwork in or they're coming in to drop it off.
Okay. So we may end up with a few more?
Oh, we absolutely will. We're counting on through conversations and...
Okay.
They have until tomorrow. There could be people that make a decision. In all honesty, we have had people call, the same person call six and seven times. So as I said, you know, people are struggling with it. It's, you know, it's the end of your career, you might have been going in the next year, the incentive was something that made it worth your while, which was our hope. It helps us with unemployment, it brings an employee back. So, you know, there are people struggling and we could be surprised, but we certainly anticipate in a number of the units that there will be retirements, and tomorrow is the last day.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson?
Yeah. Just one thing, I just wanted to talk on this cable TV fund subsidy. Have we done a little bit of looking into whether or not that's actually going to happen? Because I had a conversation last night and there seems to be a little bit of discussion on whether or not that can even, that transaction can actually happen.
I had a conversation with Mr. Condon on Wednesday, going over the rules and rights of what is allowed under the cable TV access funds. We're allowed to pay for educational purposes, anyone that's involved in cable TV activities. So what we're going to do is take the position of Brockton Public Schools that runs the cable TV studio, we're allowed to charge the salary and benefits back to that grant fund, and that's at the mayor's discretion, so it doesn't need city council approval to actually do that. So that's where that transaction. The other items were brought up, and we talked about all need city council approval. So I didn't factor in anything that needs city council approval. If they do that, you know, a few weeks, then we'll start factoring back in whatever city council approves for us.
Okay. Because, yeah, last night I was just given a little bit of different information and it may not be something that's allowed.
It was actually discussed at a city council meeting, I think about a month, a month and a half ago, and that's, this is what the outcome was. So there was another position, the mayor was looking at a fund with this, with these cable access funds, and it turned out he could not fund that. So that's what he said, all right, what can I fund? And that's what this description came up with.
Okay. So we feel pretty confident then? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. How are we doing with respect to some of those grants that your team was working on?
They, Laurie, I don't know if you want to speak? I mean, they are working on, we presented 11 at the school committee meeting the other evening. In all honesty, we had administrative interns working on them. We've had, you know, Mary Beth McManus has been working with us on the strategic plan of her own time, and actually I know sat with one of our administrative interns today on one of the after-school grants, I believe it was. So they continue to look at everything that's coming. A number of things come to me on a daily basis, and I send them to the Grants and Development Office to review them and see if it meets with, you know, our programmatic needs in the district. But Laurie's here, I think, if you want to ask her directly.
Is there anything, sort of on the cusp of being successful or in terms of a timeframe, Laurie?
Thank you very much, everyone.
I'm looking for a $5.7 million...
Exactly. The pressure isn't on by any chance. No, we most definitely are. We're looking at every opportunity...
We'll give you a gift certificate if you get it.
You should take it.
We're looking at every opportunity that we can as far as anything that we can secure for the district to help in any way whatsoever to, you know, not only deal with a shortfall, but also just to expand upon what we can do for the children and the families of our community. So we're not, we're not looking to not open any door. We're trying. I mean, we're literally, we're asking people who have never done grants before, college students who are working with us, you know, on grants, you know, on grant-funded monies to help us to secure, you know, grant funding. We're really stretching our resources as much as we can to be able to see that if we can pull as much money as we can into the district, to be able to support what needs to be done in this community, to help our children and families to secure what's best for them. So I can honestly say from my heart, I mean, the other night when I was here, I literally, I was almost brought to tears in what we had to do in the district, which just made me rise more to the occasion to say, we need to do the best that we can to bring in as many resources as we can. So I vow for our department, that's what all of us are looking to do, and we will continue to do so. So I just ask of you, if you find any resources or any, or any opportunities that are out there, just share that with us so that we can look at them as opportunities to pursue what we need to do. So I thank you all. And if you have any questions, please.
Thank you, Laurie. We know you will. Anyone?
Thank you, Laurie. We know your department's doing wonderful things and we do appreciate everything you're doing, and we're really excited about what your department is going to be do, going to be able to do every year, not just for this coming friskal year...
Absolutely.
But every year, so...
Absolutely.
We look forward to hearing about more and more grants as...
Yeah. It's exciting times, there's some challenging times, but it's also some really exciting times too.
Great, thank you.
So I look at it both ways.
So we have big news.
Yes.
And I also want to mention, because I see Laurie Mason out there in the bilingual department, it isn't just, when you look at Laurie and we think of a grants department, and I've mentioned some of the names...
It's all us, yeah.
But sped is writing grants, bilingual is writing grants, you know, Title I money. So it's not just a grants department...
It's a unified effort.
It's certainly everybody. And again, I go back to, one of the things I talked about a year ago was building capacity at the school level, to build teacher leaders in, and one of them was to be, to build that capacity so you have a grant writer in every school. Could be a $10,000 grant, that, you know, there are things that come out for classroom teachers, you know, iPads, and there are all kinds of, so that was our goal, you know, hopefully we get there at some point. Now it's much bigger fish, but it is everybody, and I thank all of you for working together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Mrs. Joyce?
I have one question. Do we have any guesstimate on what we're hoping for, what was reasonably hopeful for the race to the top additional funds?
Yes. I think it is between 150 and 200,000, but probably closer to the 150,000.
Okay. So conservatively, 150?
Conservatively, 150. As I said, the 48 is already there, almost 49. Looking at some of the unemployment cost savings for what we just gave you, which could be more, is roughly about 58?
70,000.
70?
Unemployment 70? Okay.
And we're looking at the efficiencies in staffing. I'll have a better number there for you.
So just between the race to the top and the potential unemployment, we could be looking at another $200,000 right there?
And that's quickly. So as I said, you know, by Tuesday.
Okay.
And that's along with the retirement incentives. These numbers will continue to change.
So that gives us a pretty good benchmark before the end of the school year to start looking at some recalls? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Right. Mr. Petronio?
On Title I, it's a conservative estimate. Mr. Jerome said to figure mid to end of July before we get an actual state number. What we kind of did for a rough estimate was took the overall increase, kind of know what our percentage of the overall budget is, that's where we come with that number. Hoping that it might be higher, but again, that'll happen mid, end of July, we'll get the actual allotment number on that, so...
Okay.
And that's additional? So you take the 150, the 70, and the 180? Those are all real numbers?
Yes, those are. The Title I money, we already figured in on the certified staff members returning. Mr. Petronio was saying it could increase by the time we get, we've already used the conservative estimate.
So we've used the 180?
Correct.
For the additional Title I?
Correct.
That's on the second page here?
Right. We use that in order to be able to get all the...
Okay, so that's already used. What about the 150? That, there is no number here for the race to the top.
Exactly.
Is that in addition?
That will be in it.
Yes.
Okay, and the 70K will be in addition?
Yes.
So we're conservatively at like 220?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're trying to finalize that efficiency with a number of the programs. Edison Academy, there are a number of things we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything else?
I mentioned the letter?
Yeah, certainly. Why don't you...
Well, one of the things, and I heard it mentioned, we have put together a draft, and we will be sharing it with the school committee. It will go to Commissioner Chester. I will follow up with, actually, even before I send the letter, I would like to make a phone call to him. We're going to talk about just what we said, being the gateway city, looking for possible supplemental money, talking about the Chapter 70 formula. I had a conversation today with Representative Brady and Cronin, and there already is something in the works about the Chapter 70 funding, but I want to make sure, I'm not sure exactly what that bill is. So it's great that they're looking at it, but they need to look at it through urban eyes. So we're starting to put together a letter. I gave Mr. Minicello a draft. We can certainly look at it. I'd love to have some wordsmithing with us. It got lengthy, but there's a lot to share with the commissioner. I feel very good that the commissioner actually came here this year, and one of the things we did, and I thank goodness for that, we went and saw a number of schools, but we brought him to the Barrett Russell, and what he saw there was, again, looking at our numbers, looking at 300 youngsters, looking at that building being brought online by our district, looking at the great things that were happening, and I know he saw that. So my conversation with him will be talking about the challenges that we're facing and finding out if there is some type of supplemental increase for this year, not just to talk about next year. I keep hearing about, you know, it used to be pothole accounts for unusual growth in a district. So it certainly doesn't hurt us to reach out to him in a collaborative way. So that's what the letter will be. Again, we'd like you to take a look. We'd like our state delegation to sign on. And again, I will share with the mayor that I'll be sending it to the commissioner.
That's great news.
What we need to do is, we need to basically approve the allotment going forward as proposed. And what I would suggest we do is we also give, in that motion, the superintendent a little discretion. I was thinking in the amount of $300,000 based on the numbers that we're hearing and who knows, you know, what might additionally trickle in, for her to utilize in her judgment with respect to personal, personnel services, personal services. And then, anything over $300,000 would have to be upon, allocated upon further discussion and approval of the school committee so that we can then talk about and look at some of the programmatic cuts that we've made, as well as concerns from the superintendent about... about personal services, personnel. I just think that that gives her a little bit of flexibility, because our next school committee meeting is not scheduled until the first of, I'm sorry, the eighth of July. Not that we couldn't call another special meeting, but I just think that the numbers that we're hearing, giving her a little bit of discretion, would make things go faster with respect to recalls, you know, between now and the end of the month. So, that's a suggestion, it's open for discussion.
On that suggestion, just a couple of points. I think that the committee has been very clear in our priorities to you, and you've got matching orders, so to speak, and I think that we are all on the same page as far as where, where the priorities are in staff. And I think we get to the point that we may get, start micromanaging a little too much as a committee, if we are going to approve every single staffing decision that you make. You know what our priorities are, you know where those positions need to be, and you have my full confidence that you will make the right decisions on bringing staff back. Over and above that, and I think that's a very fair number that, that Tom has brought forward, because I feel very comfortable that we've already identified where that's coming from. And staff is very, very critical, bringing that staff back is critical. We've already been able to take care of most of our classroom teachers, now we've got to look at the support staff, that helps directly in the classroom, as well as keeping our buildings and our facilities running, and that's critical as well. In addition to that, any programmatic additions, I think that we need to still be involved in going forward throughout the summer, and that will continue throughout the summer. But to be able to, given the timeframe that we have, the timeframe, timeframe that we have, you have to be able to make those decisions on a daily basis, without our interference on a daily basis. So I, I fully support Tom's recommendation, and, and I know, and I have confidence that he'll keep us apprised of those decisions.
That'll be very helpful, because as you said, you know, it's critical right now in the next week alone, and we have identified a number of areas that are possible, certainly for us to bring back additional staff, so that's appreciated.
Yeah, I just think in your, in the Friday night packets, you could certainly notify us in a quick little memo as to what came in and how you decided it should be allocated, you know?
I think that'll be every Friday, I think there'll be a budget update, because I see this as very fluid. You know, and as we do this, I also have to say again, that when we look at what we've brought back, no matter what unit it was, because of the growth we have, I want everybody to remember, these are not the positions that we requested in the superintendent's budget. You know, I understand that that might have been a reach, I think we all understand that you have to live with, certainly in your pocketbook, but there were positions in there that were very real positions, that would have allowed us to move forward, reduce class size. And I continue to say to everybody, that on the website, all of this will continue to be there, so everyone will get to see the programmatic cuts that exist, the staffing cuts that exist, the class sizes as we open the doors in September, the facilities and what we're dealing with in our facilities. Because I think when you do that, it keeps people informed, and again, it has the community support, if this is something that they would support in, in looking at our budget and in supporting us. You know, because again, it's been a lot of hours and a lot of time, and I don't think any of us feels good moving forward. I think we are moving forward, we're pleased we're identifying efficiencies or ways to at least start to get our staff back, but we still have to move the district forward. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, I mean, on that point, you know, no one here is happy with what we're doing. I mean, we're at a certain stage, we're making the best of a bad situation, but no one's happy with, you know, where we are yet. You know, the work is going to continue. But with respect to your recommendations, you were hired as our superintendent, you were hired to recommend to us what, how is the best way and manner in which to move the district forward. So despite our current economic situation, you provided us with a blueprint, a valuable blueprint, that basically outlines and tells us in your best estimation what the district needs in order to succeed, move in the right direction, and to improve student achievement and run efficiently. A big part of that running efficiently is also the facility master plan, and you know, the outlook on our buildings. I mean, so I do not feel that that was time wasted, it was what you were hired to do. And we appreciate the work that went into it. The only problem naturally is, you know, our current financial situation in terms of moving it and bringing it to fruition. But having the blueprint is a step in the right direction. You know, budgets and times will change. I mean, this is not, as people here have correctly stated, people have been here in the good times and the bad times, nothing stays stagnant for too long, so when circumstances change, we certainly have recommendations that we can implement and utilize in order to benefit our students and our community. So, you know, I wouldn't feel in any way, shape, or form regretful that you made recommendations that you truly believe the district needs to be successful, so.
I have to tell you good news then, so I got to spend time, somebody said to me, when you're feeling down, get out into the schools. So I have been to the Davis, I have been to West this week, I've been to Plough, I have been to South, I have been to the BB Russell. Your kids are still, I mean, look at the day, they are working, they're doing projects, they're working on, on math problems I couldn't solve to save my life. It, it has just been exciting. I've gone into special needs classrooms, which you know is what I love. It has just been great to see the hard work, and that includes everybody in the buildings. It was the administrative assistant, when I walked in the building, that I knew, that talked to me about things happening at the Plough. It was the custodians as I went through all the buildings. It was the teachers, the powers, and I'm not just saying this, this is what makes Brockton great. So the good news for you is, in spite of everything going on, there was teaching and, and wonderful things happening, and you're, you know, short of just a couple of days, you know, of school left. So I'm very, very proud, you know, of our school district.
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Yep.
We'll be attempting--
Sure.
Go right ahead, let's, let's see, let's see the newbie make the motion.
See how good I am at this, though. Make a motion to approve the budget as presented tonight with two caveats. One being, give discretion to the superintendent to hire personnel up to the amount of $300,000, that's for personal services. And the second caveat being that anything over $300, that we need to return to discuss those issues.
I'll second that.
Great, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Any other business?
Just as always, I want to remind, we haven't really discussed the non-net school side of the budget, we'll discuss that over the summer, that it's still short of what's needed, so there'll be some changes made there also.
Yeah.
$700,000?
Seven hundred.
Of our requested?
Of our requested, so it's a possible shortfall. Our McKinney-Vento numbers keep going up every day, homeless transportation amounts, so we're actually, might set up a meeting for Monday to discuss. I think one of the hotels is now converted from a half hotel, half homeless, to complete homeless. So not only do we lose money as far as having to do the homeless transportation, I think the cities also will lose money as far as the hotel motel taxes.
Great.
So the state doesn't pay that.
That piece needs to be added to that letter.
Did I not put that in? I don't think we did, I think you're right.
That's a, that's a--
Put us to go in.
That's a big issue for us.
Okay, well, that would be Mrs. Joyce, she's the chair of the subcommittee.
Yep, following those, safety, security, and transportation.
So notify Mrs. Joyce when you need a meeting. There are three members on that, I think it's Ray?
No.
No? Myself, Mrs. Joyce?
I believe--
And Judy?
Mrs. Sullivan, okay. It's the three of us, however, we will notify and make sure the whole committee knows when the meetings are, and you are free to come, ask questions, make recommendations, help out as much or as little as you want. And then naturally, whatever is decided goes to the full school committee for further discussion, and then naturally, full approval, like in all the other subcommittees that we have, so. So we'll be doing that.
Good.
Anything else? All right, I just would like to thank the public and all of the people who have been attending these meetings with us. It certainly has not been a, a process by which I think anyone enjoys, but we do appreciate your support. And what it basically shows is that this is a community, and a lot of people care about what's going on in our schools, and about their fellow employees. It's, it's more than just a job in the Brockton Public Schools, we all know that. It's a very special and unique, it's not really a business, but, you know, an organization. You know, it's, it's not a business, it's, it's, it's more than that, it's community. So I thank you all for attending and being part of the process. Anything else? Mr. Jordan, do you need--
Any vacations, any of us have planned, would that be helpful to you in keeping up with us or whatever?
That'd be great, if you could let us know, and then--
Or if we're planning to be away, so if you have--
We can give that to Wanda, and she can keep it sort of in a file holder.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Ozzy.
That way you're not--
Okay? Anything else? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Okay, thank you.